The time that was noticed and posted for our work session, it's Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, it's two o'clock P M. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melville Lane, Disney. And pursuant to A R S thirty eight dash four thirty one point O two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one. Uh, District two Supervisor English is present, District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
Uh Supervisor Crosby is absent at this time, and if he gets online, then we will add him to the record. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference I D four seven five, five four five, six seven zero pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero four direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items at the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions, as always, before you speak at a work session, please give us your name and who you represent, so we have a complete record. Um Mister Karwatska, are you going to be the circus master for our budget work session?
I I will be, and I'll start off things. Uh, so once again, Richard Karwatska, County Administrator, thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Judd. I'm gonna start off with kind of putting all the pictures together. We've had several meetings uh with elected officials, with presentations, so we with the assistance of Juan Frisbee, our Budget Manager. And when I say assistance, he's done most of putting together, and I just look it over and say, maybe we should tweak this a little bit. So this is the culmination of a lot of funding requests and some additional stuff. So if we turn or move on, we're gonna start off with the uh funding request, then go to expenses, and then Juan will, Mister Frisbee will cover the revenues. So if you look at the operational funding requests, a lot of these you've seen in the presentations from the assessors and the county attorney, but there's an additional request from I D C, the Defense Coordinator. Now, uh periodically, and even in the newspaper, you've seen the lack of attorneys uh that are in the county, especially when we're trying to get defense attorneys to cover cases. Unfortunately, we had some recent deaths that death that uh created a big void, and we're still trying to fix that. Uh, but the increased costs, as we're looking at our fees, and we had to increase to get more people or more attorneys down here. We're still lacking a lot, but there is an increased dollar amount, and that funding request is two hundred thousand dollars. Now, as you notice on most of these slides, it, this is coming from General Fund, so this is an increase total from the General Fund. Now bottom, we put in what the increase, if it was solely funded from a tax increase, what that would be. So on this one, you see that property tax would have to increase point one point zero eight percent in order to fund this three hundred and twenty two thousand zero hundred or eighty two dollars. Now we move on to personnel funding. Now, additional, we've heard from the courts, and we've heard from the recorder. But these additional uh requests, one is from the Health Department. There is two, two positions that they're requesting. One is from the Public Fiduciary, the Administrative Aid. Uh, since two thousand and nine, they have not increased their staffing, but their caseload has definitely increased. So they're asking for this administrative aid to help them. Now, I think most people know that the Public Fiduciary does, but they're the unsung heroes, I think, from the county. They they help out uh the unfortunate people that need to be looked over, especially their assets, their bills, and make sure these individuals get fed. Uh, the bills are paid, and otherwise, I think they'd just be a burden on the county and probably in the jail system, uh more likely. So they're definitely a needed operation, obviously statutory guideline, and often court imposed duties, but they have definitely increased. The other one is the Finance Officer for the Health Department. Now, uh, I think it was two or three years ago, there was a grant that we were able to get, and that paid for the Finance Officer for the Health Department.
Yeah, or but I said it was just ARPA.
Yeah. Was it ARPA? I thought it was additional.
No.
Okay. So, there you go.
It's okay if we come in and correct you.
Absolutely. Please do so. I'll take note of it. So the Finance Officer, that position, we were moved over to the Finance Department to start improving our oversight on grants, which we have, however, the Health Department being one of the biggest areas where a Finance Officer is needed uh because of all the grants that they have, including the Sheriff's Department. So uh, that is a much needed position, and they're asking for that to be increased or taken over by the General Fund. Additionally, uh, the Public Defender is asking for another legal secretary. I think I've mentioned before, uh, the Sheriff has definitely mentioned before the increased caseload uh of all these border-related crimes uh that have not only a burden on the Sheriff's Department, but on the court system as a whole. So there's been a thirty percent increase, not only on the prosecutorial section, on the defense, on the courts, the clerks uh that is really not funded uh by anyone besides the local county taxpayers. So that is uh definitely a problem that we need to address, and we keep talking with our state and federal representatives, but as of yet, we don't have any uh increased funding from those while we take on their duties. Now, those are from the General Fund. So when we talk about the budget impact, if all these were added in, there'd be an operational and personnel increase of eight hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars. Now, if that was solely funded from property tax, then that increase would be two point seven nine percent. So moving on, if we go to the building enhancement funding request, now these.
Could we skip over to the one that talks about other um personnel, which is the the elected officials?
Absolutely.
So we can add those up in our mind?
Yes.
With the personnel.
I am very flexible, and uh we can shift and come back to where we want. So we move on. These are mandatory increases, so this is not discretionary.
None of it is discretionary.
It's not, but uh, so all the elected officials, their salaries have been increased.
Right.
So you can see from this, uh, the total is hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, because it was a twenty thousand dollar increase for each one. Now, the E R Es are a big increase because you still have to do a contribution to E R. And so that's why they're so high. If you look at it typically, that doesn't make sense when, I'm just saying, because it didn't make sense to me. When you look at, what is a twenty thousand dollar increase? Uh, the E R E shouldn't be sixteen thousand, but because of E R P, that's how it, so the total cost is three hundred and thirty one thousand four hundred and ninety three dollars.
Well, um, one in your um mathematical mind.
So yeah, E R P cost, is that what you were gonna ask?
No, I was gonna ask you the three hundred and thirty one thousand four hundred and ninety three dollars. What would that be if it was funded by property? Because it's a, a general fund expense.
Oh, that would be a one point some percent increase of property tax. Uh, one point two, if I had to guess.
Yeah. Yeah, because if you look back to the slide for the original one.
Well, it's at one point seven nine for five hundred and nine thousand.
But the operational funding request was three hundred and twenty two thousand, and that was one point.
Yeah, but the rate increase should be what, point oh three?
So, oh, the rate, ah, I I can't get to the rate off the top of my head, but um, so.
Well, if five hundred and nine thousand is point oh four five, then three hundred and thirty one thousand should be point oh three something.
On the first page, uh, the, the increase is one point eight percent, and that's three hundred and twenty two.
Okay.
So it should be around.
Point oh two H. And this is all personnel?
Yeah, so roughly, and this is just with general numbers, uh, every one percent, you'd get a three hundred thousand dollar increase.
Okay, I was just trying to keep all the personnel together.
Oh, yeah.
In my mind. So if I've distracted you enough, I need to go back to the.
So yes, so the way, the way we, we try to separate it is a little bit of of options, as, as there were funding requests, and then mandatories, but we're going back to the building enhancement funding request. Now, this is not an increase to the General Fund uh because we already have a fund line that can absorb these, these expenses. So there's additional requests. One was by the courts that you guys already heard. That's for the Sierra State to films the carpet and the paint. That's for hundred and twenty seven thousand. Uh, then there's a couple requests from Developmental Services. One is the airport, we'll start from top. Remodel the large hangar at B D I. That's for five hundred thousand. Developmental Services, once again, for a tractor at B D I, uh, for the more bed, that'd be fifty one thousand. And then the airport side at Wilcox, which would be fifty five thousand. So those are additional requests for building enhancements that have come up. Now, the tractor.
So what do we normally put in building enhancements? A million, million two, what?
Uh, two, two million.
And so are you asking for the, I say you, is the system wanting the two million that we normally put into building enhancement as well as an additional seven hundred and thirty three thousand?
No. So that would be.
So you want to take the seven thirty three out of the?
Two million.
Too many. So it's not additional?
No, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's not an increase to the General Fund, uh, so it just comes as a.
Comes out of the General Fund, but it's not in addition to what we've already been correct.
Yes.
Think I've got it. I think I've got it.
Now, turning the page yet again, so this is separate, and we try to separate these from the General Fund to keep it as clear as possible. Uh, but obviously, always questions are welcome. So this is a simple fund from the Jail District. So when, during their presentation, there were several requests. One was an additional line from extraditions, uh, additional line for overtime, and a one position for detention health lead nurse. So this would come out of the Jail District uh fund, and those are the requests from there.
Now, let me ask you, there's all the people, I shouldn't say people, contracts that are gonna be necessary, or the contract, if, if it's one or ten, you know, in trying to put the um Jail District process together, um you've only got these three requests, isn't there gonna be a big Jail District budget?
So there, there is a big Jail District budget already, and that's, that's a big professional services line that's included. As those contracts come up, the Jail District Board will meet. So at separate steps uh while they're there, they're already budgeted for and can be covered by those costs.
I don't want somebody coming to me when they see this and say, out of all that, you're just asking two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, or go, no.
No, and we, we just don't know that, those costs yet. Uh, right now, we're in the middle of the needs assessment portion and hiring.
How much is that costing, the needs assessment?
We don't know yet. So we just put in R F Q, um, request for qualifications, and we met with three different organizations that, that's what they do is needs assessment for jails. Um, and we just scored, I think Friday was the last day, so once we figure out who our top candidate is, we'll contact them and start working out uh what the fees and costs would be for that, and that will be presented to the Jail District Board at that time. But the Jail District budget already has, and that'd be paid out of the professional services line. But that, that wouldn't be included at this point in time, because it's a, we don't have that cost yet.
Well, in order to spend, it's gotta be part of a budget, so.
Yes.
The Jail District.
Yep, and just as a reminder, you know, when, when we did this last year, uh, we shifted, you know, all the jail portion of the sheriffs to the to the Jail District and the detention health part.
And we pay into it, so.
Correct, and that's our maintenance.
Well, we need to keep mentioning that in public.
Oh, yeah.
So they don't think that, you know, that everything is, is being paid now out of the Jail District, uh, new funds. It's being paid out of the Jail District, because that's the avenue. But we're still putting in, what, six million?
Um, oh, six point four, or six point three.
Well, sixteen.
Yeah. So that, that's our maintenance of effort, and I, I think Commander Bradshaw mentioned in the presentation, just to clear up some confusion, because people see routine payments.
Very many bills.
Right, and you see routine payments, and that people are like, that's coming from the Jail District, that's coming from the half set? No, it's not. That's just our routine maintenance and payments that, that we're making. So uh, these big expenses for the building of the jail, like I said, will come uh once we get that information, put it together for the the Jail District Board.
Have we had two months of Jail District revenues?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven hundred and eighty thousand and eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, what we projected?
Well, what we received, yeah. So we, we projected for four million, and if it continues at the same rate, uh, what we're gonna get, so.
Okay.
Uh, take or take, more, sorry.
Okay.
All right. We can skip over the elected official. So one of the presentations that came before you, that was approved by the board, by the board, is the increase in health benefits. So this is an increase to the General Fund, and that would be seven hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty. So as I think it was previously explained, we have more participants uh in our county government. We have more people that need insurance, but when we, cost of the claims actually went down, the number of claims, but the cost of the claims went up. So all those factors now means that there's an increase in health benefits. So we are very fortunate. I think when we did the numbers to show what it costs, if you had to privately go out there and uh get your own insurance, um, when people see their portion of the insurance payment, there's a separate section that shows you how much the county contributes, and the county contributes a big majority of that.
Same.
Uh, one of the great benefits of working with the county is having insurance, and at a really affordable rate, especially as you get uh adding on, if you have a wife and children, so even though it seems bigger and more expensive, it is a very great asset for all those young people that are listening to the County Budget Sessions.
The multitude.
Yeah. So the, the new twist that happened lately, uh, as happens every budget season, is that the Department of Labor changed their mandatory salary increases, or their mandatory salary. Uh, and these are people that are salary positions, they're not available to get paid overtime. Uh, so they are increasing after July first and then January first of two thousand and twenty five. Now, these mandatory increases, uh, we looked at our county positions, we looked at the court positions to see how much that would increase, and that would have us, once again, mandatory, a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars roughly to increase these people's salaries. Now, this, you know, we're gonna get to the section about salary increases and about market. This has nothing to do with market. This is just like minimum wage. They, they said it, now we have to, we have to do it.
You have any idea how many people we're talking about, physicians?
Positions?
Well, it might be one physician of nurse, but it might be five people. I'm just saying, how many people does this affect?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I only look at the, the numbers. I don't know if anyone knows.
They're focused on the dollar amount.
Yeah, we're just looking at, we are gonna look at the positions again to see what else we can do, but uh, I don't know the number of positions.
Well, there was a reason that they exempt.
Yes, and the reason why, I think the, or one of the main reasons, the Department of Labor increased these standards, because, not that the county does this, but many private organizations uh use that as a way to get around the overtime. They still pay someone's salary and have them work sixty hours a week, uh, where.
They haven't seen our standard.
Yeah.
Doesn't it exist?
Exactly. All right, and then, um, if we switch to C C O P, this is another presentation, C C O P, that's an increase of fifty two thousand dollars.
At one point in time, I thought that was gonna be a wash. What, how did it come up costing?
So overall, there's incre- increased uh operational costs that are, are happening at C C O P. Now, we're in a position, I, I believe that are being successful, and we're taking out more and more subscribers. Now, down the way, we have to look at the subscriber fees and see how those could be adjusted. But right now, I, I think C C O P, I think the Sheriff, I think the organization is that really well to find a lot of grant funding, so that actually, the, I don't turn that page and say, hey, there's an increase of one million dollars uh for the C C O P budget because of all the equipment and radio equipment that we've been able to utilize through those grants.
Are, are we amortizing that so that we're putting money aside like we do at the landfill? So that we can replace the equipment as it needs to be replaced?
We, there, there have been uh money put aside uh for the equipment. We're about, Joe, I'm gonna ask, fix something of that?
All right, well, so with the, the radio equipment, it's on a S U A two with Motorola, so it will be upgraded as it, as it goes out. So yes, we are paying towards that. Um, some of the other equipment, the, the smaller end stuff, no, that's not on a, on a list. That just gets added to the budget as, as it comes to.
Well, don't you have a, a list here at the county of hours, not what the C C O P, but isn't that the way we should look at it? You know, this, all, all of it's gonna go out, so you need this.
Yeah, and all of it is, is the county retracting.
Because again, if you're gonna have to replace it all at one time, then that's too, too hard for our budget. We don't have that much new heat coming in.
So before we get into the market plan and salary increases, I just wanted to do some general math for you. Uh, so as we talked about, all these increases to the General Fund, that's roughly two point one million dollars. So we haven't had an opportunity to talk about market increase or salary increases, but before we even have that conversation, we're already talking about expenses that are two point one million dollars. So this first slide is kind of the, the, the history of what we've done for market plan increases, and I think the the county has, has done a good job and keeps doing a good job trying to reach that that point of market compensation. Now, we'll never be at a hundred percent. We're always chasing it. And you see, year after year, you know, we have put money towards market increases. The most recent, uh, FY twenty four, we put two point one million dollars. Uh, unfortunately, we can't continue that trend. Uh, the market keeps increasing and has not leveled off. The, if you turn to the next page, if we do nothing, if we put no money for salary increases, we are falling behind. And we're falling behind a little over four percent, so we'll be about eighty nine percent of market if we do nothing. Now, that is, as you've heard, I think countless times, it's very difficult to hire people. Uh, especially you heard from the courts about their needs of filling those positions, and even that increase from last year. And once again, that two point one million dollars wasn't towards a hundred percent of market. That helped them out to change uh the constant turnover, and so we always have to be pushing towards that goal because good people are hard to find. And especially in a small county, and any person's hard to find. It is difficult to fill these positions, especially when you're talking about uh professional positions. And we're, we're always fighting against all the other organizations, especially in the county that we live in, because we have people that work for the state and the feds in this county. And, you know, we don't have the resources that they have. So we still have to push forward and, and always push towards that goal. Now, what could we do? Uh, and we separated this chart where it says projected county market. Now, ninety four percent is related to last year. Uh, was it watching? Hit the mark. But if we did ninety four percent, or we gain that, that would cost the General Fund one point two million dollars. One million two hundred and twenty five thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars. If we wanted to get closer, we separated scale, so it shows what the increase would be to get closer to that amount. And as you look at, as I mentioned, the rough, every one percent is about three hundred thousand. So if we wanted to go fully fund a market study to get a hundred percent, then we're talking about three million dollars, and that would be property tax increase.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then it would change again.
And it would change again. So, and I think historically, as you see, the market has jumped unbelievably in the past three years.
I, I think what we're looking at here, though, is, is a percent of market as an average.
Yes.
And that didn't really say anything because everything that we have isn't at ninety two, it might be at ninety nine.
So what we do this, this is the.
I, I know you have to do this in order to get some kind of a, a, a mean, you know, an average, but I guess what I'm saying is does the board still have confidence that departments will be fair and judicious in allocating those monies instead of just ignoring the market and paying the people they want to?
Yes, uh, so I think this is a good opportunity to kind of explain what these numbers actually mean, and what it translates to each department. So this is what, we use this to set aside what we can afford. we use this to set aside what we can afford to then give to departments. And once we give these allocations in the department, uh, I think my time is up. So after we give these, the allocation of the departments, this is where I think our county does a really good job. And as as you mentioned, now the discretion is in the director of the elected official. And then this is what they do. They evaluate each of, each pay raise has to be evaluated. So if you have high performers, you can definitely have them higher than ninety four percent. If you have low performers, then you can give them below the ninety four percent. So that discretion exists, and even more so, I think in the past two years, we've done it. So we've asked for each department and elected official to submit their salary increases so that we can take a cursory view. Now, obviously, we're not involved in each and every person, but we can look at it on a cursory level to see if there is some indication that there's some, I don't know how to say it. Well, not favoritism, but like not taking full advantage of the evaluations and judging people and dispersing the money how it's supposed to be as the direction of the board. So we are not like some other organizations or the federal organization where you give the one percent or two percent year after year. I think this is why, like, our county does a good job because I've been put in those situations where I work really hard, but that me and the other person both get a one percent increase that year. And there
That's devastating. I I don't ever wanna be with an organization that does that. That's why I left school.
And so
You're all peas in a pod.
But uh, I'm sure I appreciate the question because it gives me an opportunity to explain because this is a difficult concept. Because when people see this, that means, oh, everyone's being paid at ninety four percent. No, that that is not the case. And yes, and some people are getting paid less. And some people are getting paid more. So it gives discretion, but I believe, uh, I think we do a good job, especially with that oversight of kind of cutting off things if we see some discrepancies.
And if you're, if you're asking Peggy and I, since Tom is not here, to look at the uh market and people, that has to be our first priority. So that's just, we can't offer services without people.
We can't offer anything without people.
Yeah, so um if we were at ninety six percent last year, I I don't think we can fall any further than ninety five and and still keep our head up, you know? So I'm 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 thinking we start at ninety five and look to see what kind of money or or abilities that we can come up with to to boost that. If you're asking for advice.
Well, with that
What do you think, Peggy?
Well, with that comes the the other part of it. So
What else you're gonna cut out and where's the money gonna come from?
Correct, correct.
Did you bring, he said he had a money tree in his truck.
Well, I'm I'm gonna cover
That was guitar.
Oh, no, that, yeah, that was a guitar. Uh, I'll cover the money tree portion right now.
So to kind of put it all together, if, if there's a request to increase uh the salaries to one point five, and we already talked about two point one million, now we're talking about three point six million dollars. So those are the expenses. Now, it's, and as I try to explain to everyone I have conversations with, there's no magical thing happening over here with my hands or a wand or anything like that. So it is, you know, are, have our revenues increased? Or if not, then the property tax rate has to. So with that, I'm stupid. Did you have a comment? But with that, I'm gonna hand it over to our budget manager, Mr. Frisbee, and he'll talk about the revenues that we're expecting to increase in the next budget.
So I'm on Frisbee, budget manager. I'm starting off with our property tax. Our property tax levy is going from twenty million on FY twenty four to twenty nine million this year, which is an in- uh, an expected increase of one million fifty seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, of course, it's an estimated number, uh, depending on collection as well. So, uh, yeah, eight hundred fifty nine is based off new construction and one hundred eighty six based off inflation or uh increase in property value. So next is the breakdown of our county sales tax. Which is eight point nine million. An increase from, and and as well, this is a projection, uh, increase of four hundred thousand from FY twenty four, which was eight point five million. In the graph, you'll see uh the FY twenty four to FY twenty to FY twenty five uh projected amount. And as well as the breakdown of where our county sales tax divides to. State sale tax uh expected amount for FY twenty five is sixteen million in comparison from FY twenty four, uh fifteen point five, an increase of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the next slide is HURF. Over HURF, um eleven point four million. And I don't have the FY twenty four, but I know it was around ten point five, so like a one million dollar increase. However, it, we, we did outperform uh the projection from last year. We haven't received uh projections from CSA. This is a a good estimate.
I think after the pandemic, a lot of people went out and bought cars. And that helped with our V O T certainly added money to food. I don't know that there was more gas. It seemed like there was more V O T, wasn't it?
Well, uh, HURF did increase a lot, and the V O T also uh outperformed our expectations. And and even, like I said, the CSA uh projection expectations.
But the HURF funds cannot be used for general fund.
Correct. HURF funds uh cannot be used for general fund expenditures. So general fund expenditures would uh amount to the state sales tax and the county sales tax and the property tax, which gives you a one point nine.
Kind of before we we go to our our last slide, kind of moving forward, just give a summation of it.
So we're halfway there with the money that's coming in.
We, we, we are halfway there. So we have an increase of one point nine million dollars in revenues. But our expenses are, uh, as a suggestion here, is three point six million dollars. So when our expenses exceed our revenues, that doesn't forecast for a bright future, you know? And I I don't think we want, I appreciate you, but I don't think you need to tell me that to, or or the board. So the problem then becomes, what do we do at this point? So that's kind of the the summation of the information that we've received to this point. Now, I, we're not expecting any twists and turns from the state legislature. However, we never know. Yes.
Yeah, they haven't done that yet.
Yeah, so we're we're hoping and I have indications are that uh there won't be any negative effects to our budget. Now, I I don't think we ever get any good positive effects, uh, when we're talking about cutting, but that's, that's a situation that we're in. And why don't you want to talk about moving forward with the next step, sir?
Yeah, uh, so moving forward, uh, by June eleventh, we'll have the tentative budget meeting. And July ninth, final budget. Uh, and property tax rate on August nineteenth.
So just to clear, because some questions have that, we build the budget. So when we build the budget, even the tentative or the final, we build it around the tax rate. That tax rate is not decided until August nineteenth. So we get a lot of confusion from the public. I know I've said it before and I've restated it before, but on June eleventh, when you, when you look at the tentative budget, that's not the time to determine the tax rate. That comes August nineteenth.
But if you if you're gonna do a a a proper budget, then you have to have some idea of what money's coming in. I mean, it's, it's not just like, you know, I mean, at home, you can't decide to buy a half million dollar house and you say, well, you're, you're only gonna be making fifty next year? Well, how do we make those payments? So you have to have some idea. But
I don't know if there's any questions at this time about expenses, the revenues moving forward or anything else that you'd like to give us directions about what to look at. We can provide that information.
Peggy, you have any comments?
No.
Each less than sad. That there's not enough money, right? I think that one thing that's a a positive. And um Kathy and the Sheriff's Department, I have to say both because Kathy's just doing the paperwork and the gentleman from the Sheriff's Department is going out to all these properties. And so one reason that we're collecting a hundred and two and a hundred and four percent of the taxes is because we're getting those, I won't call them deadbeats because actually the, most of the properties don't exist anymore, so they fell into nether, never land, but it was still on there that people thought they were gonna be getting the money. So when we were collecting ninety six point two percent, we were probably getting a hundred percent of what was actually out there. But this is more realistic now, you know, so they're working their way to uh, to trying to get all those things off of the tax rules.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the things that a lot of people don't understand, as you mentioned. All the other things that happen to bring money into this county. Right? It, if we didn't have people actively pursuing those grants, trying to bring money in, uh, we would be even worse shape.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and and so thankful for, you know, the sheriff, uh, the health department, you know, bringing in those grants. You you have the assessor who does a great job of getting out these assessed values uh with the staff that he has. Uh, and it's really unbelievable when you start looking at each department and each official to see how hard they work with with what they have.
Yeah, I was really upset with the assessor one day.
Yeah?
Yeah, I go in and I say, Phil, we gotta take this house off on this property that we have because we tore it down. And the lady that does farms and ranches, she says, oh, well, that that'll put it in a different category, so you'll have to pay more. Okay, I'm glad I told you. House is gone, so give a tax rate. They do. They, they follow the the rules.
They do, you know? And so I, I think the everyone's been working in the county really hard. And they usually do more than they're supposed to. And and we try to treat them the best way we can. We try to compensate them, compensate them the best way we can. Uh, I always feel lucky that I'm in this county and I'm working with this county. So I'm, I'm always amazed by the people I'm surrounded with and what they do.
I I think one thing, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that even the the employees back when we had the the recession, the real recession, that the employees were grateful that we didn't lay anybody off. We, you know, if there were people that left, we didn't necessarily fill the position. But we, I think we've always tried to have the employee first as our, as our goal, you know, trying to take care of them as as best we can. We've worked hard with our, our insurance, self-insurance, so that we can offer the most. We offer programs for them to stay healthy if they take advantage of those. You know, so I, as long as we can move forward with assuring them, whether they recognize it upfront or not, is that the the employees are a first priority for us. Whether or not we can pay you top dollar, we're concerned not only about your salary, but about your health, about your work conditions. We try to have buildings that are safe for them and vehicles that are safe for them to drive. And so I I I think that we probably don't take enough credit for that, you know, of of surrounding employees with a safe workplace as well as um, as well as paid workplace as we can afford. Anybody else have any comments before I tell you when our next meeting will be? Is it not the morgue? You know, you you have a pulse over there? How about you? Do you have anything you wanna say?
I have to echo what Richard's saying. It's, you know, happy to be here working in the county. It's a, it's a great place to work and the organization.
I think so. I think you all are lucky. All right. If there's nothing else for this work session, then I'll tell you that our next meeting will be Tuesday, June the fourth at ten A M. And the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a regular board meeting. This is adjourned.